Hello and welcome to the big picture. The signs of it were always there ever since the advent of the new BJP led government at the centre. It became official on the independence day when Prime Minister Modi made it clear that they were going ahead and disbanding the planning commission as we have known it all these six decades and more. The commission set up through a cabinet resolution in 1950 has been mainly involved in planning and allocation of funds to states apart from monitoring the utilization of these funds. Even before the new government came and Prime Minister Modi expressed his reservations about it and wanted it replaced, former Prime Minister Dr Manmohan Singh had himself expressed his reservations. In his last address to the commission members before he laid down office in May, he had wondered whether the tools and approaches relied by the commission was designed for a different era. Prime Minister Narendra Modi who has been critical of the functioning of the planning commission during his days as Chief Minister of Gujarat has now decided not only to change the tools and approaches but the body itself. So what kind of a body should now replace the planning commission? What is it that the new body should focus on and what is it that should be retained from the planning commission? We will discuss all this today with Sopal Chastri, former Union Minister who is also a member of the planning commission between 1999 and 2004 in the previous NDA government, Dr Mehir Shah, member of the planning commission during the second UPA government between 2009 and 2014, Professor Ravi Srivastava of the Centre for Study of Regional Development at the JNU, Poranjai Gohar Takurtha, Senior Journalist and Author and Dr Samit Patra, spokesperson of the BJP. Welcome to all of you. Mr Chastri, you were there, you are the oldest person on this panel who has been and you know part of the planning commission and things like that. You think, you think that the decision to, you know, disband or rediscover, if I may say that, the planning commission is a good idea?
You see, even when I was in the planning commission as a member and before that in the standing committee related to Ministry of Finance in Parliament, on both these occasions I also had recommended that the mandate that was originally assigned to the planning commission has never been fulfilled by the planning commission.
What was the original mandate according to?
Original mandate is contained in seven clauses in the resolution of the cabinet which you are talking about, which set up the commission and the first clause says that planning commission would make a proper assessment of the nation's resources, natural, financial and human, which it has never done and it relied on the statistics which were half-cooked and unreliable. The second was that it would...
Half-cooked and unreliable, don't tell me last sixty years Indian planning commission...
But don't go into that because we will lose the track of the main issue then. The second was that it would accordingly devise a strategy and schemes to, for optimum utilization of these resources and fix the priorities and timeframes, which it has never done. The third was and which is equally important that it would devise machinery to implement those schemes and plans and fourth that it will continuously monitor those things which it never did except tangentially. And the last one which is important, fifth, though there are two more which I don't remember now, which is very, very important, that planning commission will continuously identify impediments to growth and regularly advise the central government and all the provincial governments to remove those which planning commission never did. So the criticism is that planning commission did not fulfill its original mandate, it became a mere post office and a mere mirror image of the ministries, whatever they filed as their requirements and allocations by the central government, it cosmetically tinkered on the margin and approved those and sometimes even acted as a blocket to certain schemes which sometimes were good, sometimes these were bad. And in my presence, when I wanted to edit the hundred and forty-seven odd schemes of the main department of agriculture and cooperation and reduce them to thirteen and try to converge everything and subsume everything in those thirteen schemes instead of the multiplicity and cross purposes which we were indulging in, the government was defeated on the floor of the house, then I became member of the planning commission and I took it up and reported straight to the...
Five years you were there.
Five years I was there.
But you were not able to fulfill what you...
No, I was not able, I could not carry my weight, I tried to do this. The same special secretary who later become the Secretary of Agriculture and who had minuteed the proceedings of that committee in the agriculture ministry did not agree to reduce those below seventy-three. So this was unnecessary proliferation and then the unnecessary flap which has been created, I don't remember the exact number, but total employees at the command of planning commission are more than twenty thousand spread all over the country.
Sir, I think you have laid down at least the foundation for the discussion. Dr Mehir Shah, ten years later you joined the, after he joined, so would you agree with it, with him that you know the planning commission has not really fulfilled its mandate in these last sixty years?
See, I think Sopalji has made many sweeping statements, so I think they tend to, you know, he is a good friend of mine, veer onto the extreme. I think there are valid criticisms of the planning commission, I can understand why the government is exercised and wants to do something to reform its functioning, but I do believe that there are many positive functions that the planning commission has historically performed, which we must be very careful not to throw the baby out to the bath water and that I think is something we must...
What are these key functions?
Yeah, I'll just come to that. Because of factors that we abolished something, but we should be very clear as to the alternative that we have proposed.
Absolutely. We are looking for, we are talking about the alternative today.
Yeah, so what I was thinking was that you know if when I hear something like a think tank, as the role of the planning commission, I get worried. Because you know think tanks exist by the dozen in this country and almost every other day you hear of a new think tank being created. I think the planning commission, yes, there is a think tank role, but it's a think tank role with a difference. It is empowered in many ways to make a difference to the way the implementers carry on the job of implementation. The implementers are the ministries and the state governments.
Right.
And I believe that the planning commission has a crucial role to play in reforming implementation of the schemes that you know on which we spend lakhs of crores every year, that is something that we need a role to be played by the new institution.
In your five years there, do you think that any attempts were made to reform and any of them were successful?
Absolutely. I think you know I was brought into the planning commission, I have, you know, not been part of government, but the specific mandate the Prime Minister gave me was that we need a paradigm shift in the way we are managing water resources in India.
Okay.
And I believe a great achievement of the twelfth five-year plan in which all the state governments contributed in a major way. And let me tell you, in my opinion, it's the states that lead the process of reform in this country. The role of the planning commission has to be and that's the kind of role I tried to play and I have seen examples of that, where some of the best work that is done in some of the states can be mainstreamed across the country. One of the leading examples of that in the five years I was there is the Jyoti Gram Yojana of Gujarat, which was about separation of power feeders and I played a role in mainstreaming this across the length and breadth of India, which has made a dramatic impact on the availability of power in states such as Madhya Pradesh. So I think the process of cross-learning, which is something that is happening which is good in one part of the country, how it can be carried to another part of the country is a very important role that the planning commission was playing and the new institution, I'm not mourning, you know, the passing of an institution, I'm saying whatever new we create must carry forward the strength that was there in the earlier institution, the potential strength if you like, which was there.
And the weaknesses which Mr Sopal pointed out. You know, it's alarming weakness which he says that it doesn't have, it didn't have the kind of, you know, database or, you know, it relied upon information which is not reliable.
I think the major weakness that I have written about also publicly is that there was too much negative power, which the planning commission and the Ministry of Finance in the scheme of things in governance in India wield and that, the ability to block innovative ideas, reformist ideas was a very negative role that the planning commission is guilty of.
Itself-played, you think?
Itself-played and I had a personal experience of that in terms of the attempts I made. So I think that is a very important thing that needs, needed correction and it urgently needs correction so that we don't have this process of, you know, what the Prime Minister alluded to in his independence day speech of departments acting, you know, at cross-purposes behavior.
Cross-purposes.
And I believe that the planning commission potentially and in, there are examples of its positive role where it played a role in resolving conflicts across departments, there were problems with the states...
Even across the states.
Exactly, I was coming to that, that the state governments have so much to complain about the way they are treated by the centre. I personally was in charge of...
And this Prime Minister knows it very well.
No, absolutely. The Madhya Pradesh Chief Minister was on a fast in protest against the treatment meted out by the centre. The Prime Minister asked me and I mediated between the Chief Minister of Madhya Pradesh and the various central ministries and a resolution to his complaints was arrived at. I think this is a very powerful role that potentially the planning commission could play and did play in certain instances and the new institution must continue to play this role.
Okay, Samit Patra, Samit Patra, why do you think this is necessary? You think one of the criticisms or one of the worries which are being expressed is that has enough preparation been done before you disband an institution like a, like planning commission which has been there for six decades, six decades or more and then bringing in a new institution, has there been enough planning done? You think that is where the government can find itself in some kind of a trouble?
Now, I believe lot of planning is going into it in the sense that Mr Narendra Modi in his speech at fifteenth August mentioned a very pertinent point. He said that at times it is very essential to make a house fresh from the foundation itself than to go into a renovation of the house and I believe this is where lies the indication that it is better that we disband the whole structure and start a fresh one than trying to bring about the kind of reforms that probably Mr Manmohan Singh had also talked about. But there are two or three quick points that this government I believe really wants to derive out of the new structure. What number of, I think articles have written about is Modi's D E F, derivation out of the new body that would be formed, D for the dignity of leadership of the state, E for the empowerment of the state and F for facilitation. I believe whatever new body comes has to give back the dignity that the state ministers mostly had lost during the era of planning commission as my previous speaker was also saying that the chief ministers had gone to hunger, had even gone into hunger strike and in fact, planning commission and the environment ministry were the two important tools which were used to harass the chief minister quite often. So I believe the dignity has to be restored. As far as empowerment is concerned, Mr Modi has time and again pointed towards the federal structure of India and has said that things have changed from nineteen fifties when the, when the planning commission was formed on the line of the Soviet model and I believe the federalism structure of India is now the most strong one and the development should be state centre. And he has time and again said that the centre should behave not as a big brother of the state but as an equal partner of the state for the growth of this country and this is where letting the state decide what its priority are, where it wants to stay, where it wants to spend its funds, this I believe the state should empower itself with.
Okay.
And thirdly, it is facilitation, where the think tank, so-called think tank, I would not say it would be a think tank body, but when my predecessors say that it should, he was speaking about the Jyoti Gram project of Gujarat and how he brought it to whole of India, I believe this is what is facilitation, where you have a good idea which you believe would sell through the whole country, you should try, I mean the new body should try to facilitate that and that would be a big role. So the D E F model I believe is what we are looking towards.
Okay. Ravi Srivastava, so you think, you know, this new body, new body, what kind of a, Samit Patra talks about restoring dignity, empowerment and things like that and the federal structure, you think that the planning commission had failed in any of these matters and you think that, do you think that the new body will be able to restore this and what kind of a body would you like to see there in the place of the planning commission?
Girish, I think, you know, several articles have talked about it, several people have tried to say that the planning commission actually played several roles, not one role and one of the roles that it played which was in some sense a regulatory role. Looking at EFC is a lot of the petty bureaucracy in the planning commission in fact was involved in this so-called regulatory roles. The planning commission was also played a similar role but for a very different kind of reason with respect to the states and we know that the present Prime Minister was speak with some of the ways in which the planning commission, you know, played that role. But I think as an outsider, an ISP, I am not a member of the planning commission, I have interacted with the planning commission for over twenty years, the planning commission played a role which was extremely important, that was that of policy coordination, policy coordination between the different ministries of the government of India, a policy coordination between the centre and the states, it tried to build a framework with certain objectives from time to time within which this policy coordination would take place. Every five years it carried out a humongous exercise of consultation with experts, with state governments, with central ministries, through working through a process of working groups, steering committees and this process of consultation had in fact increased over the years. In the last few years, civil society organizations, NGOs were drawn into this process of consultation and I would say that this kind of policy coordination was in fact an extremely critical role which the planning commission played. So the negative role, the regulatory role, frankly, I don't think we needed babu's sitting in the planning commission to play the kind of role and believe me, the majority of people sitting in the planning commission were playing a regulatory role. The aspect of policy coordination, thinking through policies, thinking through what should happen was left to very few individuals, partly because the planning commission had become a place where people in the bureaucracy were put simply because they had nowhere else to go. But that, the positive side of what the planning commission did, not only every five years but as an ongoing process, one must understand and one must understand that there is what there was, there is no other body which actually plays that process, which tells us, you know, where, how much should the IMR come down. I just want to say one thing.
Yes.
A lot of the problems in the Indian economy are intersectoral problems, there are inters, you know, inter-ministerial problems.
Right.
When I was in the Arjun Sen Gupta Commission, we made a series of recommendations which did not fall within the purview of any single ministry and finally the Prime Minister said, look, why don't you speak to the planning commission? Because the planning commission will understand what it means to talk about the challenge of employment. And the final point I want to make is that the world over, internationally, the World Bank and the IMF have been trying to shift the focus back of decision-making into the finance ministries.
Right.
This is disastrous.
That's exactly.
India is one country, India is one country where there was a countervailing body, an independent body which sat through policy coordination and even the World Bank and the IMF had to consult it and to talk to it.
Right. Okay, Poranjay, that's a very important last point what Ravi Srivastava, you know, we had a discussion on this issue about two, three months back here, this was, this was what was expressed, the fear was expressed. Are we going to see all these, you know, powers being now with the finance ministry? Or the Prime Minister's office?
Or the cabinet secretariat?
And are they, are they capable of, you know, doing the job which the planning commission was doing as far as the states were concerned, as far as the coordination was concerned?
Answer, no. Very, very, in brief, no. You know, the planning commission may be dead, but the new avatar of the planning commission, we don't know what its character and complexion would be, it has to play certain roles which nobody else can play.
Exactly.
You know, see, Samit Patra talked...
If it ends up as a think tank, we will be able to do it.
It has to be much more than a think tank.
Right.
As Mehir has pointed out rightly, you know, Samit Patra said this is like marking a sort of a, the final demise of Nehruian socialism etcetera, but wait, in advanced capitalist countries who believe firmly in the virtues of free enterprise capitalism, they have planning bodies. Why do they need it? You need people within the system who are not bureaucrats, who are not politicians, who are experts in their own right, they have to look ahead. Secondly, the point that has been made again and again, this issue of coordination, you know, which Mr Modi himself is talking about, that you know, he came to Delhi as an outsider and he saw how, you know, different ministries are loggerheads with one another. Look, take two examples, Mr Sopal Chastri knows this better than I, agriculture, how many ministries are involved? Irrigation, rural development, food, civil supplies, commerce, finance etcetera, take energy.
Fertilizer.
Take energy.
Fertilizer.
More than half a dozen ministries and departments involved. At the end of the day, A is the act of, issue of coordination, policies, programs, who acts like an internal auditor of the government, who says this particular program is being properly, you know, sort of implemented or not implemented? You know, you can have external consultants, but you need people with clout within the system. Secondly, look at it historically, the planning commission has been trashed and the planning commission has been very, very powerful. Prashant Chandra Mahalanobis, who set up the Indian Statistical Institute, Nehruji's own cabinet colleagues sort of were envious of him and described him like a super Prime Minister. Take an extreme, other extreme, nineteen eighty-five, when Rajiv Gandhi was the Prime Minister, he described the members of the planning commission as a bunch of jokers.
Right.
At that point of time, the deputy chairman was Dr Manmohan Singh and if you read Mr Sumaya's book, you know, he had to be persuaded to remain in that position. Arun Shori, who many people were thinking he might occupy one of the more spacious rooms in Yojana Bhavan, he's described the planning commission as a parking lot for, you know, political cronies and, you know, retired bureaucrat, but wait, you can trash the planning commission and even within the planning commission, there's been a lot of criticism of many of its functions, but there are certain roles that have been played by the planning commission which somebody has to play. The question is, can it be just the finance ministry, can it be just the cabinet secretary, can it be just the, the, the Prime Minister's office? I would say, no, you need internal systems of checks and balances, just like we need an auditorium.
Sopal, you know, you need to answer, this is the question which will be continued to raise until we see what this, the shape which this body will take.
My initial statement in response to your first question was only a part statement.
Absolutely.
And when I say the criticism is not that planning commission was not needed, the criticism is that planning commission has not been able to fulfill its mandate.
Right.
So, but I agree with Mr Mehir Shah, Dr Mehir Shah, that planning commission has been doing roles which none else, no other entity in the government is able to do and I don't agree with Mr Samit Patra that the states felt embarrassed, I could always interact with the state, they felt most, they felt most comfortable when they went into the planning commission. Five years we have discussed annual plans and the reviews in, at half-yearly time and other interactions going to the states, they found that planning commission is more accommodative, more understanding and appreciate the difficulties of the states and I agree with him that the coordination between the states and coordination between various departments has been a very, very important role that...
Sir, we have discussed that, now I want you to, because we're running out of time, I want you to address this issue. The new body, what, what kind of a new body, this question is raised by Poranjay about whether, no?
You see, even internally we had put up notes that the unnecessary flap of the planning commission should be cut down.
Right.
Because it has more than twenty thousand employees, these regional planning cells and those things which it has never been able to achieve. And secondly, it should not only be a mere think tank and mere advisory body but a coordinating body as it is, rather it should be reminded of its original mandate and also improve its functioning, that should be the idea.
Yes.
And I agree with Mehir Shah that the baby should not be thrown out with the bath water.
Dr Mehir Shah, the question is, if, if this, the planning commission as it is now is disbanded, now who takes over the jobs which, which the planning commission was doing? Who do you think is, is capable of taking over the jobs?
No, as...
What are the, I mean, if you can, if you can lay down one, two, three, four, the important jobs which needs to be taken care of, who will, who will handle that?
No, I would answer your question by saying what this new body must do and no one else can do.
Yes.
And that is, number one, helping the facilitation, what Samit was saying, that facilitation of the best practices being mainstreamed across the length and breadth of India is something that the people of India are really looking for. We don't want only outlays in our flagship programs, we want outcomes and ensuring that is a very important role that a body must play. So it's not just thinking, it's not just a think tank role, it's an implementation, reform role which this body must play. Number two, it's about resolution of conflicts across stakeholders, it's very natural, this is what the Prime Minister was alluding to.
Dr Mehir Shah, just one second, the fear, the worry of some people is that the finance ministry will become the nodal point of all these things or the PMO as a, this thing. So, you know, then what happens to these bodies? Would the states be more comfortable dealing with the, with the finance ministry or the PMO directly in these cases?
See, Sopalji said, you know, about the comfort level of the states, actually I partly disagree with him in the sense that they were also uncomfortable about the big brother role that the planning commission historically played.
Absolutely.
And we must take that away from the planning commission, exactly the negative role that it was playing, all the babu's that, you know, have dominated this institution, but we do need somebody who is going to listen to the grievances of ministries with each other, of states with the centre and that has to be done by a body which is independent of the, you know, the actual implementers.
Okay.
So it has to be, that was the role of, it's a unique institution which stands within but outside government, you know, and that kind of unique positioning must be with the new institution as well.
Okay, as...
And deriving its validity and legitimacy from the fact that Prime Minister happens to be the chairperson.
Okay.
It's very important organically.
You also need a body for the NDC, the National Development Council, which comprises the Prime Minister, the cabinet ministers and chief ministers of all the states and unit territories, the heads. So I think to have a body that can facilitate the working of the NDC, you need, you need the planning commission.
Actually, there can be a proposal to amalgamate both rather.
NDC and then the new body.
There is a fair representation from the state, yeah.
Or what, which...
Because NDC is, NDC just one annual conference, a formality which is never followed.
NDC.
Yes, NDC and most of the complaints which were filed by the states were on the occasion of the NDC annual conference rather than with the planning commission. During my five years, maybe that during Dr Mehir Shah's time, states never complained about the behaviour of the planning commission.
Sopalji, you remember one of the recommendations of the Sarkaria Commission was to have revived this whole interstate council of states, have a permanent body and not have a once-a-year meeting of the NDC.
Professor Ravi Srivastava?
Yeah, you know, I would like to just make a slight difference with me, you see the problem, there is general dilemma in the institutions of the central government in dealing with the states and they see, one is, basically has to do with the stick and the carrot. Okay, I mean, in, on, one, how far do you let the states go in following independent policies and where do you rein them in or try to make them do what you think they should be doing? Now, in a federal government, this is a, this is a very critical dilemma, the planning commission use the planned funds at this, as, let's say the stake, you know, conditionalities and so on and so forth and this is part of a general thing which we have to think it through, you know, I mean, it requires seriously thinking through. The other parts, I think, you know, many of us are agreeing on what this new body should be focusing on, policy coordination, setting up goals, it's not a question of how much investment is at the command of the planning commission or the government of India or the public entities, but what do they expect it to achieve and how do they expect it to achieve? That is extremely important, that whatever body comes into existence now has to play the negative role and, and in particular, I would single out the, the control that the planning commission exercises over the plan, the way, you know, basically EFC scrutinizing these and so on, really gives to, arise to a lot of babudum in the planning commission. This is a role which can easily be assumed by the finance ministry without doing any violence to the basic requirements of what the planning commission is supposed to do. But this body, this, you know, you call it a development commission, call it what you may, I, it has played an extremely important role in putting views together, putting a broad holistic view of where the government should go and how it should go about doing it.
Okay.
Despite all limitations.
Okay, Samit, very quickly, last, last words to you, you think, you think that the government, you know, it has, it has actually invited suggestions from people, do you think that the government has some kind of a blueprint about how it will, how it will go about?
No, I believe, let's not preempt as to what kind of structure would be formed, whatever structure would be formed would be for the benefit of the people and that's the reason as to why Mr Modi has invited in his personal platform as to what the country and its citizen feels that the body should be like.
Okay.
It's a welcome step, but most importantly, what it should not be like is elected, democratically elected chief ministers rushing into the well of red tapeism to get the priorities of their own state. I believe this should go.
That...
Let the states decide what the priority is, that the federal structures rule at the end of the day.
Okay.
But Girish, it is a bit ironical that we are talking about replacing this extremely important institution after it has been junked.
Ah, yeah, Mr Chastri, very quick, last words to you.
It should be, you see, restructured, having reference to the things that it has missed historically, having reference to the important and very vital roles of coordination and other things that it has played during this historic time and third, what things should be added to it? So it has to be restructured and any name given but remaining, keeping it akin to what the planning commission is...
You know, I agree, I agree with what Srivastavji said, this debate should have taken place, you know, before, before it was scrapped, before a decision was taken to scrap.
Dr Mehir Shah, one other thing which was said during the last debate we had was about who will, who will talk about the interests of the poor? You think that is, that is a crucial issue which needs to be tackled?
I think absolutely. I think the, the attempts in the recent years in the planning commission that we were making was to make planning a much more inclusive and participatory process.
Right.
And we were, I had in fact invited, all the chairs of the working groups that I had set up were from outside government.
Right.
And most of the members were experts, the best minds and practitioners in the country were planning for the country going ahead and I think that process must be strengthened rather than weakened.
Must be strengthened and retained, okay, I think on that note, we need to then retaining the inclusiveness of the whole system which, which had prevailed. Hopefully, we will, we will, we will have many more discussions before this new body takes shape. Thanks to all my guests, I hope the government will take note of all these suggestions which has come about in, in today's discussions. Thanks to all my guests, Professor Ravi Srivastava, Samit Patra, Mehir Singh, Mehir Shah, sorry, Sopal Chastri and Poranjay. Sompal Chastri and Poranjay. Please keep watching, we'll come back with another issue on Big Picture same time tomorrow.